Aloha Mike. I apologize for this. I wanted to use it, but I don't know it sounds to you.
Um, we're still trying to work with technical issue. Yeah. Alright, one more task. Janine, can you hear me? Okay, okay, perfect.
Shh, stop it.
The meeting of the Kuleo O Kalaniiki Neighbor Board will now come to order. Thank you all for being here. We have a modification of our agenda just um for communities knowledge. The third presentation has been postponed. We're not going to go to the city and state monthly reports. Lieutenant Nishimura.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lieutenant Nishimura from HPD District Seven. Uh, the following is the monthly statistics for August. Uh, motor vehicle theft, we had three incidents. Burglary, seven. Theft, eleven. UEMV or car break-ins were two. And the total calls for service was six thousand six hundred and twenty-seven. Our uh safety tip for the month is pedestrian safety tips. First for uh drivers, uh you must yield to pedestrians when they are in the uh in the crosswalk. For pedestrians, uh we invite you to please be visible. Use cross uh use crosswalks when available. And please follow the um traffic or sorry, the pedestrian control devices. So that we can all be uh all safe when we're out there. But with that, that is our um presentation for the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Lieutenant Nishimura? Yes, um recognizing but recognizing our secretary Janine, go ahead.
Um aloha, I uh it was reported that there was an incident in New Valley um two weeks ago on a um on a Saturday night, there was uh incident with fire fireworks. And um it was it was really hard to to hear that the um police said that they would not want to go and break up the services at King's Cathedral because it was a funeral service. But these people had um actually beaten up one of our residents, uh the the people that attended that funeral. So we're just a little um kind of confused, you know, we we know you're here to protect us, but yet when we tell you that the people who beat are one of our residents up attended the church, you refuse to go to the church to investigate. Um because it was a service and I'm I I just don't understand why why the police would do that. I mean, it's um it's a business. Yes, it is a church, but it's still a business. And if a business is harboring people who have done a crime, especially a a terrible assault against uh someone, I would have hoped that you would have investigated so that those people could be brought to justice. And they have yet to be brought to justice. And I just was very disappointed to hear that. And I didn't know if you wanted to say something about it and if you know anything about the incident.
I I'm actually not familiar with the what happened. Um but from what you're telling me, if I understand correctly, that was the was the fireworks related to this uh incident?
Yes.
So the fireworks is what um started the whole thing? They were arguing about fireworks? Is that what happened?
Well, as you know, our hillsides are very dry. So when these people who were attending this funeral at King's Cathedral's church got out of the their services or whatever, they they went and started lighting aerial fireworks in our valley. And one of the residents told them to stop. And when he did that, um you know, and he tried to return back to his home, they followed him and beat him up. And then actually threw um something through his uh front window. Um and that that family has refused to come back home because they're they're afraid that those um you know, people will come back now that they know where they live. And so it is a very awful thing to hear. Um especially because, you know, I mean, I heard those aerial fireworks and my first instinct was to go out there and tell them to stop too. Because, you know, it's especially after what happened in Maui. We cannot have people just throwing off fireworks in our valley when it was so dry. And so um you know, if I had actually done done that, I would have gotten one beaten up. Because that's how these people were. And it just um you know, really really sad that this happened. And you know, I don't even know when if they're even gonna come back because like I said, they're too scared to come back. Because those people know where they live.
Yeah, uh I I will look into the incident for you and I'll find out, but I do agree with you that uh something of this nature, there should have should be a full and proper investigation. Uh and um should have been followed upon. So I'll look into it. Yeah, I could. I'm not familiar with what happened uh on that evening, but I'll look into it and then I can give you guys some follow-up later.
Thank you. And like I said, you know, we are we're totally um we love our we love our police. You know, we the we love the fact that you are there to protect us. And that's why I this was so shocking. Because you know, normally this would this would never happen, you know, and it just was really really sad to hear.
Yes, we you know, we really appreciate the support of the community. And we know you guys really support us. So I'll I'll try and uh find out what happened. I can give you guys a little bit more information if I have any. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I also have questions for HPD Lieutenant Nishimura. Number. Sheri Spangler, recognizing Sheri Spangler.
Yes, I hope the police can maybe um we have an issue later on in our agenda about a neighbor who has issues with another neighbor on Opehe Street. And I wondered if anybody can talk to that a little bit uh so the police officer can hear it. Because I he yes, but it's on the agenda for later and the police will be gone. So I wonder if someone could talk about it now while the police are still there. Thank you.
Um, the presenter for that topic has postponed their presentation to another meeting. They're going to try to um obtain testimony from from affected people. So other affected people. So we won't be able to do that this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for HPD? And I want to thank you Lieutenant Nishimura and thank you for taking care of our community. And and please do let us know what the normal procedure is for um for trying to de-escalate situations where um violence is breaking out and where there are fireworks and uh put in a um in in our current dry environment, which can in also endanger the community. Please explain what um what you're able to do as as a police officer. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we can uh whenever there's any type of dispute, whether it regards to fireworks or an argument, uh please call nine-one-one and have an officer come in need with you so we can ascertain all the facts. And then we can uh move forward from there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a great.
I see we have our our um fire department um available now. Um hello, good evening. Who are we speaking to? I didn't I can't see your name on on the window on on your camera.
Hi, good evening.
Pardon?
I said, good evening. Uh, my name is Emmett Hall. I'm the fire captain here at on Engine Twenty-three, Third Platoon.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Lieutenant Hall. Captain Hall, I am. Um, can you please proceed with your report? What do you have to tell us?
Alright, um first the incident statistics from August. We had uh one structure fire, three activated alarms with no fire, thirty-eight medical incidents, three motor vehicle crashes, and one ocean rescue. Um, I also have a safety tip. It's in regards to evacuation planning. So in the event of an emergency, everyone should be prepared with an evacuation plan. Create a plan with your family members and household members. And keep in mind those with limited abilities, children and elderly. Identify possible exits and routes and predetermine a safe meeting place. Also, everyone should assemble an emergency supply kit. And remember to pack important documents, medicines, and necessary pet items. Stay calm, stay informed, and stay alert. And for more information, visit fire.honolulu.gov. Are there any questions?
Yes, do we have any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? Any questions for Captain Hall? I'm trying to pull up um an issue that was brought up by a community member. And this is more to Hawaiian Electric. Um but um sir, you know that people are very concerned about the the risk for wildfires after the tragedy in the Haina. And 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 especially are concerned about about electric lines that are above the ground. Um, do you um as a as a firefighter find that that um electric lines above the ground are are risky for communities and and should be part of infrastructure um improvement?
Well, um I'm not a fire investigator. So I'm not the one who determines whether or not an electrical line uh caused a fire. Um and I also am not really qualified to comment on infrastructure, unfortunately. But what I will do is I'll respond to any fires, whether they're called caused by electrical lines or not.
I know, I don't want it um taint the ongoing investigation. But um since people are concerned are are seeing are are they're more sensitive to what they see in their environment that could generate a wildfire? Um, I'm I'm just bringing this up and wondering um in what what the community can do besides ask the Hawaiian Electric Company to try to move the lines underground. Um, have have you been called to any wildfires on the on the just that are on either side of Aina Haina or Wailupi Valley?
Uh, we we have had uh wildfires on occasion uh in the greater Aina Haina Wailupi area. Um, they are they are somewhat rare as the valleys tend to get a lot of rain. But we have responded to a few fires. I think most recently, there was one that started in Kalaniiki Valley. And sort of made its way up to uh Waileiki Ridge. Um, so it does happen. It does happen.
Well, we hope that we don't have to call you in Wailupi or any of the other valleys that um either Kuleo O or or um or Kalaniiki Valley in the future or in the near everybody's on edge because of that. And we thank you for being there. And and trying to take trying to also help the people who have medical emergencies in addition to the fire responses. Are there any questions for um Honolulu Fire Department Captain Hall? I don't see. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, sir, for for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much, and I hope everyone has a safe evening.
Thank you, you too. Um, our next report is from Board of Water Supply. I'm just thinking that we could defer, let's see. Mr. Chris Sugimoto, hello.
Yeah, hello. You want me to give the report or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Have a presentation later too. Or not you, but but um but people from the department.
Okay, let me share my screen. Okay, uh hello, my name is Chris Sugimoto from the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Um, before I give this month's general water announcements, I like to go over the main break report. So there were two water main breaks last month, both at the State Madras at eight-two-eight I'd looked my street. So the first one was on August seventh, and it was a two-inch main. And the second one was on August twelfth, and it was also a two-inch main. So the general water announcements for this month is a source protection week. So the Board of Water Supply will observe uh source protection week from September twenty-fourth through September thirtieth. So the goal is to bring awareness about the importance of protecting our precious drinking water sources. So while Oahu's water purely comes from groundwater resources, here are some basic ways you can protect the source. Again, conserve and use water efficiently, check and repair leaks regularly. Uh, use only what you need and don't waste it. Properly dispose of household waste and protect our watersheds. So with the closure of three water sources near Red Hill, we all need to be responsible stewards to ensure we'll have an adequate supply of safe drinking water today and for future generations. And find out more information on our website at www dot board of watersupply dot com forward slash source. So let's all do our parts and make every drop count. That's the end of my report. And I believe I have some responses from questions from last month. So the first question was regarding uh the Red Hill Community Representation Initiative. So is there a reason why BWS isn't on the committee for the Red Hill CRI? So the BWS does not want to take any available positions for community members to participate in. Uh, the BWS will serve as a resource to the CRI. And was BWS even invited to join the committee? Uh, no, BWS was not invited to join the CRI. However, we attended the first meeting to monitor the process. Uh, the BWS is willing to serve as a resource and attend future meetings to support community members. And the next question was regarding um whether if a BWS can take a feature uh construction developments because of water shortage. So I believe a water commission is the agency that um approves water use permits and not BWS. Uh, so BWS approves building permits and there's no building memoratorium in the Honolulu water system that we require water conservation measures for new developments. That's the end of my report. Does anyone have any questions or comments for BWS?
Chair recognizes Janine Johnson.
Hi, did I hear that correctly, that uh there is no building moratorium for new developments?
For the Honolulu water uh uh system right now, yes, that's correct.
That doesn't seem possible. I mean, we're running out of water. You folks tell us we're running out of water. You just said that there's we have to conserve. How how are we supposed to conserve if there's no building mor- moratorium? I don't understand. Uh, were we conserving so more people can come here and use more water? I don't, this this doesn't make sense. It really doesn't. I'm sorry.
Hi, uh, this is Kathleen Pachinui, and I'd like to address that question, ma'am. Thanks, Chris, for that. Uh, we don't have the ability to deny building permits. That's the Department of Planning and Permitting. Uh, what we do have is we do impose conservation efforts on any new things. Now, for example, if somebody were to come in on a system and the system is stressed out, for example, Aia Halava, and somebody came in and they wanted to build, you know, a lot of, you know, houses or a lot of condos. And the system will not accept that because we're down fifty percent. We could say, well, right now, the system will not accept buildings of that size. And we we got the infrastructure will not handle it. That we can do. Now, we do have a water shortage plan on our website. And we work very closely with contractors. And they're the ones we have certain triggers that we can do. And any anybody can go and take a look at it. And we have certain triggers that our board has to approve. But we are not currently in a water shortage. We do have plenty of water, but what we're concerned about, especially in Aia Halava and Metro Honolulu, is we still are down those wells. We are in the process of building new exploratory wells. But that does take time. So we what we want to do is be smart about our water management. And that's why we ask people to conserve. And I'm really happy to announce that even this past month of July, which is one of our highest water usage because it's hot, uh, we were down considerably from where we've been in the past, even on a five-year rolling average. So people are monitoring and are protecting the resource. Even if we had an infinite amount of water, we'd still want to protect the resource because that's just the right thing to do. So I hope that helps. Thanks for some of your questions, ma'am. I know it's not a perfect answer. But we're not allowed to, that's not our Kuleana, we're not allowed to deny building permits itself. That really the issue, and it's something you could talk to your council member about.
Other questions for Board of Water Supply? Thank you very much, Christopher.
Thank you. Mahalo, everyone. Good night.
We'll now move on to board business. We have forum. And we are lacking forum for board action. Um, we have a Chang, are you online with us? I apologize, Mr. Chang, that uh we cannot vote on um having you join the board at this meeting. Um, hopefully, next meeting, we will have enough board members so that we can do that. Because um we we do need you and um we and thank you for your interest in joining in serving in joining our board and serving the community. Just to um for information, we have vacant five, six, and seven. Uh, please, sir, serving your community and being community to get to know your legislative representative. Find out how to get things done and to learn which actions. Um, what we try to do is as a board is to allow to have um community their concerns. And then we kind of all stick our heads together and try to figure find solutions and um who can help us the most. Spangler has her hand in. Sheri Spangler, your hands up. Sheri, go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. Um, you're breaking up, coming in and out. Is it just me and my computer? Or is it anyone else experiencing that problem? Is it just our computer? That when you speak, Clarissa, it's going in and out.
You're breaking up, Clarissa, your transmission. Okay. I don't know.
Speak into the mic. Can you hear us now?
We can hear you. It's just breaking up, going in and out.
It's very muted.
And very muted, muffled.
Okay.
So it's hard to understand. So I thank you.
Okay, anything else, Sheri?
That's all. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Did everyone get the minutes for the August three meeting? Um, are there any if the and we're not gonna go through that motion because we don't have forum. So um so that our community understands, we need to have at least nine board members to attend the meeting for us to to even go through basic to to um get to our basic business, which includes um electing new board members and approving our minutes. That's pretty clear. Okay, so this will be in a um a meeting held for information. And um that is valuable as well. So um our third issue is selection of alternate meeting facilities. And I understand that a forum for um church has been submitted. Judy Ann, do you have any updates on where we stand with that? Because we'd like to be closer to to the east side communities so that people can can join us in person. And so we're on the lookout.
Yes, so I did actually forward the information to uh my office manager. Uh, currently, they're looking at the um the contract and how we can actually fit the contract with that location. Was there any other locations? Because I know we were talking about maybe like three locations that we want that the board wanted to approve. I've just in case if one of them doesn't uh go through, because there is a contracting process. So I just wanted to double check with the board.
Holly, do you have any updates? Or would you like to ask Judy Ann about anything that um you were able to get started?
Uh, thank you, Judy Ann. Thank you so much for getting that uh ball rolling. Um, so there is a place we could go that doesn't cost anything. But it isn't one that we um it's the it's Wailupi School, the old Wailupi school site. And it's not wonderful. It doesn't have air conditioning. But we can do that as a um now that we're past the elections and everything. Um, I would just throw out there to start there. Or the library. The library is too small long-term, so we still need to look at that. But my understanding from the church was that they had to bring this issue to their board and they meet once a month. Did you happen to find out when they meet, Judy Ann?
So currently, we don't have any, we didn't get any response from the church at all. We have to what was what's gonna happen is, I believe, my office has to either contact them with a formal contract. My um my office also needs to do like a walkthrough to make sure that there's enough like internet and there's enough, you know, things that it would be comparable. Um, just basic walkthrough and then to see if it, you know, and then talk to the person that is handling the contract. Uh, right now, I have um my office manager's training another person to just only do facilities for the NCO. So she's gonna be like really focusing on just the facilities for any of the boards. Um, as of right now, um, I know that we have their contact number. I can follow up with my office manager as soon as I'm as tomorrow. I can call I can follow up with them to make sure if they got anything, any ball rolling. But um I will also give them the opportunity to look at Wailupi School, the old Wailupi School and Aina Haina Library. The Wailupi School, is it possible for you to email me like the um if they're if they do have a contract or or any kind of contract forms that we need to fill or even?
No, they don't. No, because because they're a city, because they're a city and we're a city. It's all good.
Yeah, if it's municipal, then more than likely, it's it's possible. That might be more possible.
Yeah, yeah, no, they said it would be, they said it would be fine. So that, I mean, we may not want to stay there long term, but you know, who long who knows how long it'll take Kilauna to process things. So in in the meantime, we can just go ahead and, you know, try it out at Wailupi. So we have fewer of the technical issues and so forth.
Okay, we got a feature. Okay, perfect. All right, um, but I will look, I will have, um, my office look at Inahaina Library as well. Because I know that we've met there in the past, the board has met there in the past. So that's, that could be another option. I just don't know what the relationship is with the library and NCO currently. So my time, unfortunately, I'm sorry about that. So, um, we'll work on that as well.
Yeah, they, they said that, uh, when I asked them, but that's been a couple of months. They said it was absolutely fine. The only hiccup there was that somebody had to go in person before four o'clock and pick up the key.
Right, right. Yeah, we can, um, that will be, it's okay for me to recognize, I'm sorry. I didn't really do it. Um, yes, we do that with Kaimaki as well. We have to go actually and pick up the key, um, before the library closes. So that's a routine that we can do. Yeah, that's fine, too. Awesome. Okay.
Excellent.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Bye.
I see it, um, the hand up for Sherry Spangler. Go ahead, Sherry.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that question. I know, Callie, you've done a lot of work on this and I really appreciate it. But when it comes to Wailupi School, I have a memory of Wailupi School. Very hot, no air, very dark parking lot and very steep steps to get up. And, uh, it's, you know, I just, there's something about that place. It's just oogaboo goo up there. It's dark and it's hot. So it's so easy to be in the library. The gal there, we talked with her when we met, um.
Oh, good. Holly, yeah.
I think her name's Holly. She's very amenable of having us come back. We don't have that many people even coming on our board. So it's not going to be crowded to be in the library. And the library is air-conditioned, convenient parking lot. And right there in the middle of where we are. That's my little bit for the cause. But thank you so much, Callie, for everything you've done.
Question from Hailani. Hey, Hailani. Try to speak loud. What happened to Holy Nativity? What happened to Holy Nativity? Holly, can you answer Hailani's question?
Yes, what happened to Holy Nativity is that they, the only, we can't use the space that they want us to use, that they have for us to use. So it's just too bad. But we're not going to have a community meeting in, in the sanctuary. And that was the only space available that would accommodate us. So.
Can you explain why it wasn't an appropriate space at Holy Nativity?
Because all, we would all be, um, in different queues, looking at Clarissa up on the podium. It's a worship space there, you know, we can't have it. I, I feel like it's unfair. If I was, um, someone of a different faith, that would not make me feel comfortable.
Consideration, we don't have forum today is to start with, consider starting with Inahaina Library and, and see how many people actually show up. Because, um, I only see two board members at this meeting. And that's the way live attendance is going to be. Then we aren't going to, um, we won't fill up the facility at Inahaina Library, um, at least for half a year and until the ball gets rolling and people start thinking about, um, perhaps leaving their home and coming to, coming to, um, participate in person. Okay, I got a nod from Judy Ann. So I'm one, I'm, we will discuss this more offline. Yes, Callie?
Um, I, I'm totally fine with the library, but I'm not fine with, um, the characterization of Sherry of Wailupi. I think it's been years. Um, there is a lovely ADA path. There's no, there's nothing difficult anymore. I guess they've cleaned it up. They, maybe they had to. Um, it does not have AC and I'm fine with it. But it's actually a really great location, um, other than the, the air thing.
Um, for clarification purposes, Holly, which place doesn't have AC?
The, um, the, uh, Wailupi School. One of the spaces at Kilauna does and one of them does not. Uh, one of them's, anyway.
Okay. The chair recognizes Hailani.
So, um, I'm still stuck on, I, because it's free. It's available. Right there area. Um, it's paid.
Can you talk louder?
Sorry, the room capability is Wi-Fi. Um, they said they would set up a table in front so that we could, uh, um, we could have our board in front and the community there. I just think it's a win-win deal. Have that capacity. They offered it early on, so I think, um, I, I would like to add that as an alternative, maybe at the very least, um, just in case any.
Thank you. So we are now considering at the top two are Kilauna and Inahaina Library.
So we'll put whole.
Yeah.
Fourth option, third or fourth option, if that's okay. Is that okay, Chair? Yes, okay.
Hey, um, Sherry Spangler.
Just a quick question. Callie, by the way, have they put lights up in the parking lot at Wailupi School? Because there were no lights there at night. And in winter, it's as dark as all get out in that parking lot. Can't see.
And they have, um, not only lights there, but there, it's, you know, it's right next to the, the pickleball courts. And they're heavily used. So I'm quite sure that illumination won't be an issue.
Quite sure.
Are the, do the pickleball courts imp, are they going to infringe on the parking for the Wailupi School?
No, there's, not enough. Not enough. There's, there's plenty of parking. There was like forty spaces.
Okay, Sherry, would you please address the chair and not speak back and forth to, to other participants? Thank you.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
So having attend, since I do attend occasional meetings at Wailupi School, it's still dark in the parking lot. Um, there is no interference from anyone playing pickleball because it's too dark to play pickleball at that time. But it is kind of a stuffy place and you do have to go up steep stairs. So, um, right now, it's not one of our top two options anyway, so no worries. Okay, I want to go on to, um, a request to chair the next neighborhood board meeting on October fifth. And I won't put anyone on the spot here. Um, but I just want to review the, um, the, the, um, chain of command for neighborhood boards. So, um, when the chair is unable to conduct a meeting, the, um, the, the, the duty goes to the vice chair. When the vice chair cannot conduct the meeting, then the secretary is next in line to do that. Um, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity to. An evening, okay? Um, after, if the secretary is unwilling or unable to chair the meeting, then the treasurer will chair the meeting. If the treasurer is unwilling or unable to chair the meeting, it falls to the most senior. Followed by Hailani Sanota Paul, followed by Shelley Hamm, followed by, by Partner and, and, um, too. I would like to have the feedback from the, the. Members and you let me know. Going to take the gavel on October fifth. Thank you. Okay, we'll now go to announcements. There's announcement for an electric company pole installation at four six eight zero Konaanoole Highway. There will be another pole installation on three seven zero Eli Lupe Road. That ends the board business today. Items that are concerned to them. Um, I have input for a resident on, yeah, maybe I'll just start with that. So resident Cedric Wong, who lives up on. Which is, um, has expressed his concern about wildfire fire risk on that ridge. Um, he cited a picture, and I don't know if I can share a screen of, 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 uh, there's a location where there are elec, seven to eight electric poles on the hillside. And, um, there's a history of two wildfires in that one area. So, um, he did reach out to, um, to Hawaiian Electric Company, Susan Char, also Teresa Ing, legislated for Senator Stanley Chang. So they are aware of the concern and, um, but did not provide any specific response. Teresa, do you? Are you? Oh, no, no. Okay, Teresa, are you on this call?
She is.
Teresa Ing. Hello? Do you have a response from, from Senator Chang regarding the wildfire risk on the ridge, um, below Paola Street? Be in Inahaina Valley?
Oh, no. I can't, um, bring that back to Senator.
Hailani? Information that I have to sharing with my neighbors. Wildfire prevention. That I'm not, um, going here for water supply. So I'll share that with the board. Um, and then I also want to put it in the chat or something. I'll give it to Judy.
Yep, and then I can distribute it and put it on the Google Drive.
Yeah.
Is that okay, Chair?
It's a, it's a. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any member of the public attending tonight's meeting who would raise a concern? Member Spangler, please go ahead. Sherry Spangler.
I'm, I'm sorry it takes so long to work the computer. Um, does anyone know who owns the land where the wildfire, where those fires have started? It's very important to know who owns the land in back of the home, up above the homes.
Paola?
On Paola Street.
Um, it's all the way down the ridge that the. You start from the, from the ridge and go all the way into the valley.
Yeah, but who owns the land?
Is that Kamehameha Schools?
Is it Board of Water Supply? I mean, who is it?
I don't know.
I mean, when, when Mr. Wong comes to give a presentation or anyone online or the senator's office or representative, we need to know who owns the land. That's the first step of the process. Because they need to maintain the side of the, you know, Kalama Valley, it's Kamehameha Schools Bishop of State. And that's where the wildfires. And I know Paola gets them. Thank you.
Ask, um, one of the participants, um, who's. Um, I think I see both memo. And who owns the land that's under the, um, the electric poles that go from the bottom. Memo, you don't know? How about Jeannie? Jeannie, do you know?
Uh, my suggestion is Danny Tangang lives around there on Paola Street and that area. He might know.
Yeah. Okay.
I want to toss it to him to re, uh, research.
Okay, we, we need to find out. That's a good point. Thank you, Sherry. Okay, um, issues that haven't been addressed? Anyone wants to bring up something during this part of our meeting? Okay, Hailani, Hailani Sanota Paul wants to bring up the incident at King's Chapel. Um, can you tell people what hap, what was?
We can't hear you.
Yeah, you want to sit here?
I can log in.
I think I'm logged in. I can go on.
Okay.
Okay, it's going to be.
I gotta mute myself?
Just sit, just sit here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I wanted to, um, bring that up because I think, uh.
We can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now? Can you hear, no? Hear me now?
Yes, for the moment, yes.
Okay. So, uh, a couple of weeks ago, there was an incident. Um, at the Neo Valley, um, right near the Neo Valley Shopping Center. Um, there was a funeral that took place at the King's Chapel. And the attendees, um, were, went down the road, uh, right next, uh, right, I think it was Mahi Mahi Street or something. Is it Mahi Mahi Street? Oh, I forget. Anyway, so it was, it was like right there. You could see it from seven eleven. I was not there, but, um, it was a story that was shared on Facebook. And it was shared on, um, on other social media platforms. Uh, what happened was they, they blew fireworks and the, um, one of the residents there came out of their house. And, um, there was some exchange. And it ended up being where the people that were there for the fireworks and the funeral in the King's Chapel chased the resident down the road and attacked him physically. And then, um, I believe they threw something through the window as well. I'll do the guy's wind, the residence window. Anyway, um, it, uh, I don't know what's happening with that, but I do think that it's, uh, something of concern that King's Chapel is not taking responsibility for what happened. Um, from the last I heard and or read was that there was no apology to the residents. And the family of the poor man who got attacked had to drag him into. So I think this is, uh, you know, something we should, um, address. Um, or, or maybe add. Of concern that this is happening and maybe give some suggestions like, um, they should have a, um, officer on duty, especially if there's going to be alcohol served or whatever. officer on duty, especially if there's going to be alcohol served or whatever. Like all events, when we have only use the the Veterans Memorial Center by Keheh Laguna. At center, you have to hire a a police officer, an off duty police officer. So just wondering if there's action, maybe I just want to bring it up. I and maybe have it on the next agenda, next meeting agenda. So that maybe we could take some action, maybe write a letter or a reso or something to address that situation and to help the residents of that area who feels, you know, I'm sure they don't feel safe right now.
Um, fragmented sequence of events that have been posted. We need to find out exactly what Chapel responded because differences in the accounts that I've heard. So that's the first thing we need to do is establish what happened and then
We cannot hear you. You're cutting in and out.
Hey, Janine, you're on. I see your hand up. Please go ahead.
Hi, I I also feel that we should it should be something that we talk about on our agenda. I do know personally what happened. I wasn't there, but you know, I my very good friend was the next door neighbor and did did see what happened and what what is happening now is that the church is backing away from their their first statement that they didn't know what was going on and you know, and how they they want to be in contact with the people, but you know, it they haven't made an effort. In fact, the family has gotten a lawyer. And they are checking that out. So I the only problem is I don't know what if what we do would hurt their situation because of the attorney. But I usually you don't have to get an attorney if you've already if you've been sorry, you you know, you try to do the things that they've asked for, but they haven't really done anything that the family has asked for. So I think that's why they got an attorney. But if we as a community can stand by them and state that, you know, this kind of thing will not stand in our communities, whether it's a church, whether it's a business or whatever it is, that people should not be allowed to get away with having their guests or, you know, whoever that is attending their events do what they did to a member of my community. And you know, like I said, if that had been me, if if I had gotten in my car like I usually do when I hear aerial fireworks and gotten in there and confronted them like this resident had done, and that would have been me. That would have been beaten up. So, you know, we we have to protect each other. We have to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And I think Haley was very correct to say that they should have an off duty police officer for every single event from now on. I think that's the only way that our community is going to feel safe. You know, from the people that attend that church.
Bean, could you or the or the person you know who lives in New Valley, please let me know who's going to be the spokesperson, the presenter on this issue for next month? Thank you. If we don't have any other concerns to bring up at this meeting, I'd like to go to the officials reports. First, John Ouchi, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative. John, are you on? Yes, I see you. Good evening, John.
Yes, how are you doing, Chair? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Sorry, I'm going to play this a little bit noisy, so I'm gonna do what I can right now. I have tonight some highlights from the mayor's newsletter, which can be found at www dot one Oahu dot org forward slash newsletter. But the highlights I do have. There is a message from Mayor Blangiardi on a statement on the devastating wildfires that destroyed Lahaina and the information on what everyone can do to be most helpful. Reporting, there's also a new lifeguard tower at Kahue Point Beach Park Electric Beach, which was installed on August third, twenty twenty three. It is actually the first in eleven years, first lifeguard station to be installed in eleven years, which expands the total to forty two towers across the island. The tower was immediately staffed and did their first rescue two hours later. There is some news too on the liquor community, the liquor commission's new administrator, Dal Patillos. He's a longtime industry leader with years of hands on experience. There is also news on how mayor and the administration is following through on a decades old promise to redevelop the historic Verona Village in Eva. The city will be turning over that land to the developer Peter Savio and Habitat for Humanity so they can redevelop the historic village. Last piece of news I have is on a long retirement of a longtime city employee. Mary Lewis, the administrator of the Blaze Dell Arena in Waikiki Shell, announced her retirement after more than thirty years of public service. Mary has worked with her team to engage with local, national and international clients to provide Hawaii with a wide range of entertainment, athletics, expo, culture and educational events. City bids Mary a heartfelt congratulations and a warm huiho. So some of you may have had the pleasure of working with Mary in the past and just wanted to pass that on. Otherwise, I have no other updates for right now and I will be standing by.
Hello, John. You have any questions for the mayor? Again, does anyone have any questions for the for Mayor Blangiardi or John? Okay, I don't think you have any questions this time. Thank you very much for for coming tonight, John.
Thank you, and I apologize for missing last month's meeting.
You're forgiven once. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, I'm looking for Dave Day for he's Governor Josh Green's representative. Dave, are you hiding somewhere? Adam Do. It's your turn. Hey, we're glad to see you and yes, you're okay, I I have a presentation for you next month. But please let me know what is new in in council chair's office and if you have any responses to questions asked in our last meeting, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the board. I'm Adam Do, Community Liaison for Chair Waters. I've emailed our newsletter to the board and it can also be found on the council city council's website. First off, I'd like to remind the community to file for their real property tax credit and home exemption. The city and county of Honolulu encourages eligible homeowners to apply for a real property tax credit. The tax credit applications are now available online at www dot Honolulu dot J O V backslash treasury and in person at all satellite city halls. Applicants who filed last year were mailed their applications on July fourteenth, twenty twenty three. The filing deadline is October second. Secondly, Oahu Fire Safety and Preparedness. In light of the recent wildfires on Maui, many committee members have raised concerns about fire safety risks on Oahu. Council Chair Waters introduced Resolution twenty three dash one ninety four, supporting Maui's recovery and efforts. The Public Safety Committee discussed this resolution and emergency preparedness. Community wildfire preparedness and Firewise Hawaii shared resources at recent neighborhood board meeting. These resources can be found at www dot Hawaii wildfire dot org backslash home. Then lastly, I wanted to give an update on monster homes. Bill fifty two twenty twenty three relating to large dwellings passed first reading at the September seventh full council meeting yesterday and was referred to the committee of on planning and zoning. DPP proposed Bill fifty two to solve the growing monster home issues. The bill recommends increasing fines substantially with an initial fine of twenty five thousand dollars and up to ten thousand dollars per day for those making false statements to building officials. Bill fifty two is intended to replace Bill forty four twenty twenty three relating to false statements and was reviewed by the Planning Commission as a more feasible and tailored option. Please visit www dot Honolulu city council dot org to review Bill fifty two and submit testimony and make your voice heard. With that, I'm happy to take any questions to bring back to Chair Waters.
Questions for Adam Do. From here, Lani Sumotapali.
I just wanted Chair Waters to know. Okay, so I know Chair Waters is actually helping or supporting Pu'u Hono Oai Lupe with the preservation of the burials there. And I wanted to make I wanted to share, just give an update on what's happening. There were two more burials found recently during the course of an archaeological inventory survey that was done last week. And we suspect there are a lot more on that site. Two of the the two new burials that were found there in Waileupe are now unprotected because they're not they're not registered yet. And and that's a concern and I wanted to let let Chair Waters know that as well because it is in his district and concerned tomorrow is our Clean Water and Natural Lands Fund hearing. And unfortunately, you know, we do have member like maybe two members that are not in support of our initiative here. But this is very concerning for us as Hawaiians and for residents on that there are so many burials in this area and it's not going to stop. We are we we are in other areas that may have burials as well right on that property. So this is an issue. I don't want it to to get like swept under the rug. I I really want the community to know that is a sacred place and that Hawaiians should be in charge of taking care of our own EVI. Have been taking care of the EVI that we receive. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for that update. Chair Waters and I will, we are meeting tomorrow with the Department of Land Management. I believe the managing director and deputy director will be there as well as well as Ms. Otis to discuss this Waileupe burial site. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Adam. Are there any more questions for Chair Waters? All right, thank you, Adam, for coming tonight.
Thank you, Chair.
Can I have the report from Teresa Ing for Senator Stanley Chang?
Hi, Chair. Hi, everyone. So I just put into the chat the link to our September newsletter. And also, if you wanted to sign up for Senator Chang's housing newsletter, the link is here. We wanted to bring up how there's a lot of tsunami evacuation area signs that are popping up around the around the district. And we checked with the Honolulu Department of Emergency Management and there's been some confusion about what the sign means. So the signs mark where tsunami could theoretically reach. And if your home is situated above the sign, a tsunami likely won't reach you. But if your home is below a tsunami evacuation sign, you should evacuate if tsunami is reported to be coming. But these signs again are just informational and the Department of Emergency Management recommends that you refer to your evacuation map and I'll put the link in the chat here. And then I wanted to circle back to share your question on the about the power lines on Paola Street. So sorry, I misunderstood it earlier, but our office did reach out to Hiko. And they told us that the city and the state doesn't have the right to move it because it was placed proper permits and whatnot. But according to their representative, they are researching into whether it is a fire hazard and what to do about it.
Wait, can you please please repeat that again? I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Um, everything or about the Hiko?
Um, why? Why can't this the city and state do anything about it?
Oh, yeah, because there was a like legitimate permits to input the polls. But Hiko said that they will research into how much of a hazard this is.
They still know it's on Hiko to do further, do more research and then who are they going to get back to?
Essentially, um, they they just said they'll, I presume it would be since we we sent the inquiry.
Okay, thank you. Please let us know what you hear and I may also reach out to Hiko on behalf of the resident who brought up this issue because apparently there have been two fires in on this ridge and there is a legitimate concern, I think, about having another fire and how difficult it may be to contain it. So really appreciate your help with with trying to prevent wildfires in in the dry areas, which include the Inahaina Waileupe Valley.
Got it. Thanks, Chair.
Yes. Here, Lani Sumotapali would like to ask you a question.
I I wanted to ask a question to Senator Chang about the the proclamation working group. Because of of the controversy, you know, the Haina community, the Maui community, they're suffering. And they have been very vocal about the proclamation working group putting Lahaina agenda items on their meeting agenda in Honolulu. While Lahaina people are still actually struggling to keep their head above water. The working group last week put agenda items on their agenda here in Honolulu to decide things moving forward for the homesteads and for other developments. And it concerns me that our Senator Chang was on that working group, sitting there. And it also concerns me that he's part of this working group because the Maui community has been very, very vocal about their concerns about this working group. And we need to respect our the community that's suffering now. And as a constituent of Senator Chang, I ask him Um, and as a constituent of Senator Chang, I ask him to please have compassion. Have compassion for the people of Maui, for Lahaina, and do not make decisions without them being on the table, especially about their future and about future development. So I, I did watch the hearing and I was very sad to see, uh, Senator Chang on there and um, I don't know where he stands on all of this, but I do hope that he will, um, he, he will respect the, the Maui community and their wishes to, to be part of their redevelopment, to be part of building their, back their own community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your comments. Um, I wanted to, um, clear something up in case other, um, members of the community are confused. So like regarding the working group, um, the, the members are decided by the governor. Um, so like Senator Chang didn't necessarily, um, apply to be a member of the working group, but I, I'll take it back to Senator.
Thank you. Yes, it, it, the, the people of Maui should be on the table and have a chance to determine how, what should, what will take place to to also say how it should be rebuilt. So we send that, um, that concern back to him. Teresa, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you Chair.
You too. A nice evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Our next official report is, is, um, Representative Mark Casham is Mark Casham or one of his representatives available? Moving to Hawaii Department of Transportation, Casey Abe.
Good evening, Chair. Let me share my screen. I hope you folks can see my screen here.
I can see it.
Okay, good evening Chair Burkitt, uh, board members. Casey Abe from the State DOT Highways Division. I just have one item to report back from the August meeting about why Kalani'An'Ona Highway is classified as an expressway. Um, our planning branch updated our federal aid functional classification, all seen procedures guideline back in December twenty twelve, which outlines our procedures for classifying our highways and roads. I'll place the link in the, uh, on, in the, of the guidelines in the chat. Um, federal highways normally classify roadways into three functional classification categories. Articular highways, collector roads and local roads and are based on service they are intended to provide. This slide shows FHWA and Hawaii's functional classification system. Hawaii's system, um, is further broken down into urban and rural. Currently Kalani'An'Ona Highway is classified as a principal artillery, articular, uh, urban, other freeway and or expressway. And so, um, characteristics of urban articular serve major activity centers. Kalani'An'Ona Highway from Ika, Iina Koa to Hawaii Kai Drive serves major activity centers like Kahala Mall, Kalani High School, the Hawaii Kai Town Center, which has Costco. And the average daily, average annual daily traffic along this section is between fifty thousand and eighty thousand vehicles per day. And it is the only regional highway facility in the east of, east Oahu corridor. Carrying high proportions of total urban travel. Kalani'An'Ona Highway is the only regional highway facility in east Oahu corridor. If you are entering or exiting east Oahu, you are most likely traveling on Kalani'An'Ona Highway. Another option is to go around the island, uh, inter, interconnect and provide continuity for major rural corridors. Kalani'An'Ona Highway connects the rural area of Waianae'An'Ona with urban east Oahu and ultimately the H-one freeway, which provides access to urbanized Honolulu. Number four, uh, serves demand in, in, for intra-area travel. Kalani'An'Ona Highway provides access for many residential areas. Hawaii Kai, Haina-Haina, Waialai, to the H-one freeway, which then provides access to downtown Honolulu, the central business district of Oahu. Uh, express and final expressways are principal articulars having multiple lanes and a physical barrier separating direction of traffic. Kalani'An'Ona Highway from Iina Koa to Hawaii Kai Drive has these characteristics. And finally, principal articulars classified as expressways in general are meant to provide a high degree of mobility. In part are significantly limiting access points. While Kalani'An'Ona Highway from Iina Koa to Hawaii Kai Drive does include sections where direct access is allowed by abutting land uses, this section of Kalani'An'Ona Highway mainly functions as a principal articular or expressway, which is why it is currently classified as such. Uh, this concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Um, Sherry Spangler, I see your hand is up.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so Casey, that's the first time I've ever heard of Kalani'An'Ona Highway being called an expressway and, uh, just because we now go to Hawaii Kai. What's, what's the speed limit to, uh, on the high, on the highway?
It's thirty-five miles right now posted.
And what is the, what is the, uh, what is the speed limit for an expressway?
Well, again, normally, you know, you have to understand that Hawaii is a little different from the mainland and our federal highways partners, they understand Hawaii is unique. We don't have, um, actually interstate ways like the mainland where you have freeways that connect from one state to another. You know, our interstate highway freeways are still within Oahu and on the same but they're willing to be flexible to provide us additional federal funding. And they utilize other reasons like, you know, it's connecting, uh, military bases to each other. So it, you know, the, the definition of expressway is broad. Uh, we tell Hawaii does not meet every single requirement of expressway. But, um, the federal highways work with us and allow us to have some flexibility. So we could, um, obtain federal funds to help maintain and update, upkeep these, these highways. That's why we, we very fortunately, the federal highways are flexible with us.
So, uh, Clarissa, may I continue to ask a question? I can't hear you, Clarissa.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so why is the speed limit thirty-five? It's a joke because just coming back from Costco, I always do the speed limit thirty-five. Everybody on the highway from been way behind me on stoplights, they're all passing me. I go in the fast lane and do thirty-five and I do it on purpose. Every single car speeds past me on the right and then gets back to the left to speed in front of me. You know as well as I do that Kalani'An'Ona Highway is a residential corridor called a highway. It services all the residents of that highway. And that at some point, if you consider, continue to call this an expressway, aren't you then mandated to do sound baffle walls on either side of the highway? Like you do on Koki Keely.
I, I, again, uh, for better understanding, talking to our planning branch, it's, it's the name of the roadway is Kalani'An'Ona Highway, um, but it's designated as an expressway because again, we're working with our federal highways in this classification process. It was allows us to obtain additional federal funds. So, you know, it, it's a, it's a challenging, that's why, you know, you, you may have first heard of expressway. But, um, technically, you know, it's only for our classification that we use for, um, working with our federal highways partners.
Uh, Clarissa, may I ask you a question?
I'd like you to, um, allow somebody else to ask a question. I believe Janine has her hand up as well.
Thank you. Fine. We'll wait.
Go ahead, Janine.
Hi, um, I, did I hear you say there were over fifty thousand cars per day on Kalani'An'Ona Highway?
Yes.
Wow. That's a lot of cars for that one area. I mean, so that's, um, I mean, no wonder there's such a, you know, every community is upset about the control traffic lights and the timing and stuff, but, uh, there's just so many cars.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all, that's all. I wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Casey.
I'd just like to remind, remind everyone that we have submitted a, um, resolution to study Kalani'An'Ona Highway. And I believe part of, um, much of the concern relates to enforcement of the, um, of, of the speed limits that are posted. Um, people are, are going faster, but that doesn't have anything to do with um, acknowledging that Kalani'An'Ona Highway is an expression of expressway. So I think we need to be careful about what we're talking about and we already have asked, um, HDOT or the State Department of Transportation, um, the governor, the mayor, council chair Tommy Waters and the other chairs of the Oahu Neighborhood Board Systems enforcing the speed limit. So I, I don't think we should keep beating up on Casey.
Um, cannot hear you, can't hear you.
I think, um, you, you made your point. We submitted a resolution to study the problem and enforce the speed limit. And whether it's called expressway or not expressway, it's just a classification. And, um, and, and Casey is just informing us what that classification means and I think we should let it rest at this point.
Yes, I mean, um,
And, 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 um, move on because we have two presentations that are going to take some time, Casey. I'm just, I just want to acknowledge that, um, that you have done your research on this and, and thank you for clarifying what expressway means. Um, I want to allow Board of Water Supply to tell us-
Clarissa, Clarissa, please.
Yes.
I've been waiting, I've been waiting for Casey to come here so I could ask this other question.
Okay, is it the same kind of question that you asked already?
Well, it doesn't matter if it's the same kind. I have, these are questions. We need to know what the, what the speed limit is for an expressway. Because what we're trying to fight is that everyone thinks that Kalani'An'Ona Highway, which is a residential corridor, they think it's a freeway. They treat it like a freeway and they do those speeds. And when I talked to Mayor Blangiardi, not, not, at, at Mayor Blangiardi's uh, town hall at the Kalani High School, I talked to the policeman. And they said they don't even bother to give tickets because they said legislature won't even acknowledge them. So they're not out there enforcing the speed limit. And we need to, I know that I have in my possession, uh, letters from people in Kuleo O'Valley and Niu Valley complaining about the fact that even ten years ago, before this new terminology for the highway, they were trying to get, they were trying to talk to, uh, Department of Transportation, the state, to give consideration to them longer time to get out of Niu Valley and Kuleo O'. And they were told, no, 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 we have to give preference to the drive time from Hawaii Kai into town. So what we're trying to constantly maintain here, this vigil, is that we're not an expressway, we're not a freeway. We are a residential corridor that has to service a lot of people up in the valleys and on the ocean side need to get out and get around town. We're not a service corridor for Hawaii Kai or for downtown. And that's what we need to be talking about. And, you know, I'm sorry that, that Casey Abe is the man here trying to tell us this news. I have been dealing with the State Department of Transportation since nineteen eighty-nine. And I've never heard of this highway being referred to as an expressway. And pat, patting me on the head going, well, huh huh, you know, it's a very serious thing to all of a sudden change the designation of a highway into an expressway. It's one step away from calling it a freeway, which is what they've been trying to do all along, which means they'll change the speed limit. And we need to-
That is what he's trying to do, um, um, Sherry. I, he is just telling you where the definition came from. If, we should, um, if you would like, we can make this, um, a part of the agenda for next time, but we really do need to move on to our presentations.
Could you request that Casey put that also, uh, send that to us? We can have that link, what he, what he said.
Yes, oh, I, 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 uh, I sent the link to, uh, the report that I showed on the presentation. It's in the chat. And, um, I just, um, as I mentioned-
Can you get it on the chat? Can you send it?
Chat, email.
Can you get it? Can you email it? Not on the chat?
Oh, yes, it's not in the chat.
You can email it to Judy M. And she'll get it out.
Okay, oh, I, I-
Um, so the agenda item will be Lani'An'Ona Highway versus expressway and speed limit concerns.
Um, Ms. Spangler wants me to try and research, um, official speed limit of an expressway. I can-
All I know is that- By your calling it an expressway, you're one step away from raising the speed limit and not acknowledging that it's a residential corridor servicing all the homes. So many homes, from Iina Koa to, you know, Kuleo or Iina Koa.
As I, as I mentioned, um, in my presentation, that's the only roadway, you know, that people live in Hawaii Kai can reach Hawaii Kai or Waianae'An'Ona. So they have to go to Kalani'An'Ona Highway. If they don't have access to Kalani'An'Ona Highway, they would have to take the long route around the island through the Lekeliki or Poli, you know, to get to Hawaii Kai.
Uh, you know, just before, before we close off and let this other presentation take place, we've been fighting the building in Hawaii Kai since nineteen eighty-nine because the our Kalani'An'Ona Highway is at, it's already over capacity. And the State Department of Transportation knows it and they allowed all that building to happen in Hawaii Kai and to allow all that congestion to happen on a highway that cannot handle the congestion. So don't tell, you know, we can't cry now about Hawaii Kai has to get into town. We've been living here since there was only portlock and fighting that growth on a highway that couldn't handle it. And the State Department of Transportation knows that they can't handle all the growth that's happening.
But, yes, Ms. Spangler, but the DOT does not issue building permits.
You, oh, you've been in this every step of the way. We'll get to another talk at another time, but DOT had to give their clearance and okay and saying that there was capacity on the highway. That's why you have HOV, only capacity.
Sherry, I'm gonna have to mute you if you don't allow this meeting to go on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I would like to introduce Kathleen Pahinui from Board of Water Supply, who is going to discuss the, um, five-year rate schedule for residents.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it, board members. Uh, with me tonight, I have our deputy manager, Erwin Calada, and from our finance division, June Yip, uh, who will be available to answer any questions. I'm going to kind of speed through this relatively quickly so we can get to any questions. I do know Chair sent the, uh, presentation and our handout to the board members uh, prior to, uh, several hours prior to this meeting today. And for those, uh, who did not get copies, you can go to boardofwatersupply.com. It's in the chat right there on the homepage. You will see a little bar that says proposed rates. If you click on that, you will be able to follow along the presentation in the, in the PDF. You'll just need to scroll down. Next slide, please. Uh, most of you know, we have a very large and complex water system. We serve about a hundred, on average, a hundred and forty-five million gallons per day to nearly one million people. We have about twenty-one hundred miles of pipe. We are a semi-autonomous agency. We are financially separate from the rest of the city and county and we are funded only by the ratepayers. We don't just receive any money from property taxes. And any rate place, rate increase that we have is only applies to the water rate, not to the- and any rate place, rate increase that we have is only applies to the water rate, not to the sewer. That, that is handled by the Department of Environmental Services. This is an important chart. This just shows you where the money goes, where we, where we're spending the money. A lot of it goes into operations and maintenance, capital improvements, and of course, labor, health, retirement, employee salaries. Labor is always one of the highest costs in any business. Electricity is a huge cost for us, as you can imagine. We have a number of pumps pumping up to the hills and the ridges to serve our customers there. And then debt service, we do fund our capital projects, not just through ratepayer money, but through debt service. We have been issuing bonds for about the last three years. And we also look into state revolving funds as well to finance our, our projects. With the last rate increase, we were able to fund almost five hundred projects, totally nearly eight million, eight hundred million dollars. A number of these were planning design, and, but the bulk of them were in construction, are in construction projects. Unfortunately, we had a number of hits, same as everybody else. We were hit by COVID, which changed use in our customer water patterns. We were hit with inflation. Our last set of water increases was a little over twelve percent. Unfortunately, inflation was posted at twenty-one percent, and therefore we had a deficit between eight and nine percent in our purchasing power, the same as all of us here sitting here tonight. It suffered. The other big one is, we've all seen our electric bills. Ours went up very sharply. For 2023, our electrical bill, our electricity cost us thirty-three million dollars. And we do have a PV and solar program in place. We did this several years ago. And as you can see, even though the purple line, the kilowatt hours went down, the energy cost still went up significantly, and unfortunately, we could not keep up with that. We do have a, the ability to pass this cost on to our customers like Kiko does, but we chose not to do that because we know, because of COVID, we know that a lot of people were dealing with lots of financial issues, and we didn't want to add to the burden. Red Hill, no secret there, Red Hill has definitely cost us money. We do not have, in terms of dollars, what the final cost will be. We're still working on that. But we do need to replace nearly eighteen million gallons worth of capacity. As I mentioned earlier, we are in the process of locating and drilling new monitoring wells as well as a couple of exploratory wells. We have taken strong action to tighten our belt. We, we really don't want to pass on any more cost than we absolutely have to. Over the last couple of years, as I mentioned, we chose not to pass on the energy cost. We've deferred purchases of things such as replacement vehicles and other equipment, and we have deferred less critical capital projects to stay within our budget. We've managed to stay to, and, and hold on to the current rate increases from 2018 to 2023, and we had less than a one percent increase to our 2024 operations and maintenance budget despite. So our strategy is to strike a balance between safe and dependable water service and a rate affordability by focusing on quality. We have to defer capital projects. We want to keep our O and M flat. And we also want to update our water master plan so that can help, especially with the changes that we've been finishing, and with Red Hill will help us inform a better road map for the next thirty years. And we want to adjust to days our working capital to, in case of risks such as a disaster, such as we've been talking tonight, a potential fire could take out some of our reservoirs or pumps if we were hit with that. The increases we are proposing will raise about five hundred and fifty million additional dollars. This will continue to fund our operations and maintenance in addition to over a billion dollars in critical infrastructure projects over the five years. The biggest two areas of investment for now are new sources, shown in the yellow, the yellow band there, and in pipelines showing in the brown, because as you may remember last time, we had increases. Replacing our pipelines was a critical project, and our goal was, and still is, is to get up to ten miles of pipe replacement per year. One of the things about our customer that some may know and may not know is that we have different customer classes. The bulk of our customers are in single-family residential, accounts for about ninety-five percent, ninety percent of our customer base with nearly, just a little over thirty-five percent of the water usage. And we charge, our rates charge about ninety-five percent of our cost of recovery. That means what it takes to serve a single-family home, we cover ninety-five percent of the costs and the rates that we charge for the money, for the a multi-unit, that's anything, three units or more, so that's all your condos, a lot of your townhome units, things like that. We have an agricultural rate, we have a non-residential rate, which is flat. And then we also provide non-potable recycled water primarily out in the EVA area. We have a plant adjacent to the Hona'uli EMV plant. We're looking at rates of ten percent for the first two years, and then nine percent, eight and a half, eight and eight percent. That is what we're looking at with the first rate increase starting in January. Actually, would be two rate increases in 2024, January and July, and then annually after that. Next slide, please. And again, all the customer classes will have the same rate increase, but it will vary because multi and single and agriculture are what we call tiered rate structures. This shows the rate tiers in single-family and multifamily that we charge it for usage. So the more you use, the more you will pay in terms of your rate, and this is our current rate structure right now. Do charges per thousand gallons. Next slide. However, we do still have our essential needs tier. Ten percent of our residential customers only use about two thousand gallons every month, and so we do want to limit that increase in that specific tier to only two and a half percent to help those. Most of those people tend to be kapuna or people that really work hard to conserve, and, and so we want to reward that behavior. Next slide. So again, this shows, just another way to show it, that those people who use over thirty thousand gallons per month, and we have three percent of our single-family water users, will use that much water in a single month. Will pay for that, how much water they're using. Thank you. These are the rates that we're currently looking at. This is the same information as you saw previously, but this, this is what the tier rates will be for each tier. So a current tier in essential needs is four dollars and forty-six cents per, per thousand gallons, up to two thousand gallons, and then it will go up to four fifty-seven, and ultimately in 2028, it'll be five dollars and seventeen cents for the first. And that continues on for each of the different tiers. Shows you how to calculate your water bill. I won't spend any time on this specific slide. Please, next slide, please. Be also on your water bill, as most of you know, we have a customer charge. This helps us cover the cost for maintaining meters, for going out and reading the meters, and it's based on the size of your meter. The first two, five eighths and three quarters are, that most of the size of our meters in our system, and most what single-family houses will have in their system, and they pay the lowest charge. So current charge is twelve dollars and nine cents, and ultimately it will end up at twenty dollars and eighteen cents. And that's a standard held across the board, but as you can see, if the meter size goes up, the cost, the monthly cost will definitely go up because it costs us more to charge to maintain those meters. Next slide, please. So just to give you an idea of what the bills will look like, so somebody who's a lot, what we call a low-water user, currently will start paying, they currently pay twenty-one dollars, but will ultimately pay thirty dollars for their water in July of 2028. That is a change of six point one percent over the five. Average water user, this is somebody who uses, a family that uses about nine thousand gallons per, per month. Again, they will start about sixty, they're currently paying about sixty dollars, and they will end up just paying just under a hundred dollars at the end of the five-year period, a change of about seven point eight percent. Next slide. And then the high-water user currently pays about two hundred and thirty dollars per month for their water, and that will go up to about four hundred and thirteen dollars per month. Nine, that's about a nine percent change. This shows the multi-unit. Again, this is mostly condos and townhomes. Different tiers are, they use less water on average in a single-family because they have less outdoor irrigation usages. Most people that have a single-family usually have a lawn that they water. Most multi-unit, not so much. Not true in a lot, some cases, but in most cases. Next, please. And this is just a sample of what it would be on a, like a three-inch meter for a small condo. Their current bill is about just under over eighty-six hundred. By 2028, they would be paying fourteen thousand five hundred ninety-three. And please remember condos, you know, the HOA fees, townhomes, HOA fees. So the users, the residents there generally do not see a water bill. So that means that the association will take that water bill. It's usually based on square footage of your unit, and that's what they will tack into your HOA fee that each, that each owner pays. So they generally don't see their water bill. They don't know generally what the water bill looks like. And that's divided by units. We, next slide, please. Non-residential pays a flat fee. Now, non-residential customers, this is all businesses, all government, anything that's not a residential ag or agriculture on this island pays a flat fee currently of five dollars and twenty-seven cents per thousand gallons. They actually pay more than their cost of service. They pay a hundred and seventeen percent, which then subsidizes the single-family and our agriculture and some of our non-potable units. This is just an example of the rates. They're currently at five twenty-seven. It will go up to eight eighty by twenty-two. And here's just a sample. For example, everyone wants, on a hotel, if they have a six-inch meter, they're currently paying about eighty-two hundred dollars a month, and that will go up to thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-six at the end of the schedule. And then some others, like a large stocking center, such as Alamoana's, around twenty-five thousand now, and it will go up. We do, we will continue having lower rates to support local agriculture. We want to support the state and the cities policies on sustainable ag and food security, and we do want to continue to support. Again, it only really affects on the west side of the island, but we do believe it's an important policy. Thank you. Next slide. And then we still are going to continue our waivers for affordable and homeless housing. Last five years, we've waived about two million dollars, and that, what happens is people come in at the time of the building permit, tell us how many units they have, and then we will waive the meter and installation hookup fees. Waiver on retrofit for fire sprinklers. To date, though, only Marco Polo has taken advantage of that waiver. We do understand that installing fire sprinklers is a big expense for a lot of condominiums. More will take advantage of it as time moves on. Next slide, please. And we are considering a waiver for new farmers, waiving the meter costs for new farmers. These are people who are getting into farming. Again, we want to support state and city policy on food sustainability. We got a grant from the state of Hawaii for a well in Puni'a a couple of years ago, and so up to a million dollars. And on average, the meters can run about between seven thousand and thirteen thousand dollars. So it is not an insignificant cost for a new farmer, and then they can use that money for other things that they need to purchase. And we, again, have a lot of rebates. Some of you may be familiar with our new toilet rebate. Well, not so new. We had it back in the nineties, and it's done very well. And we're coming up with a new program that we're working with the city on called a direct install for kapuna living on their own. We have been doing direct installs in senior assisted living facilities for the last couple of years, but now we want to reach independent seniors who are still living on their own, that may not know that they have a leak on their property or have a running toilet. So we want to go and do a water audit for them and help them, and we're going to be partnering with the city as well as St. Francis to assist in this program. Thank you. This is our rate adoption process. We are now in the output, that community outreach. We had four meetings. We'll have a public hearing at our board of directors, and we're going to be going to, probably about twenty neighborhood boards as well, plus some other communities that we've, separate community-type meetings that we've been asked to attend. And we're looking to make this decision sometime in October, probably the end of October, for the public hearing, and then the board will vote on the final rate proposal at the. And we're accepting comments, and you can reach us either at BWS, at BWSrates@HBWS.org. You can call us at seven four eight five zero four one. We're accepting comments through October fifteenth. And I'm ready to take any questions. Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
What if we have a kapuna that lives both in a single-family home? The, the program is geared right now towards kapuna still living independently, but call me. My understanding is that, that in the, in two thousand twenty-four, there will be two ten percent hikes, so that's about, that's twenty percent rate hike in two thousand twenty.
You are absolutely correct.
Okay. Now, we're is concerned about, about developers who offer a minimal, say, ten percent number of way above what most people can afford? Do they get the lower rate for their entire development?
No, that's a great question, Chair. They only get the waiver up to the number of units, affordable units. The way we determine what the cost will be for the facility's use charge is based on a number of fixtures. In other words, faucets, toilets, sinks, tubs in that unit. And that's why we're only doing it upon the submission of the building permit from DPP, because we do know, it happens a lot, that developers will go in at one level, and then the project changes, morphs over the couple of years. And we don't want to be giving a waiver to a project that said, I'm going to have a hundred affordable units, and then they only come back with ten. So you're absolutely correct. So we do not give that waiver until they're, they are fixed in exactly what they're going to do, and it's only on the affordable portion. It was not on the market price.
Questions for, for Ms. Pahinui? Any questions regarding the rate increase? Overwhelmed by the volume of information.
Done an excellent job of explaining.
If anyone has any questions, if they say, I think.
Okay. I didn't mean to overlook you. I just, okay, the Chair recognizes Janine Johnson. Please go ahead.
Hi, Ms. Pahinui. I'm, I'm a little confused. Is this the rate increase that is sort of connected to the watershed plan? Or is this totally separate from the water wars, this watershed plan that you folks are rolling out?
Oh, no, no, that's, it's not attached to the watershed plan. That's completely separate.
Okay, because I, you know, I mean, when we heard the presentation for that, it was like, okay, the reason why we're kind of doing this is so that you can, you know, not use your water, water your lawns, you know, with potable water and all of that stuff. And I thought, oh, hey, we're going to be starting to do great stuff, and then now we're still getting an increase. So it's just, it seems really, I mean, yes, we should be saving water. I'm, I'm a water Nazi in my house, but I just feel like, you know, that was kind of poor timing that you told us, okay, yes, do all this watershed stuff, which is great, and then now we're still getting hit with a twenty percent rate hike in one year. That, that's really hard for, you know, the elderly to, to do. So I just, I'm a little disappointed in that, and, and I normally am not disappointed with the Board of Water Supply because I think they do an excellent job of advocating for our, protecting our water source. But I just, I'm a little disappointed.
Well, ma'am, I, and I completely hear what you're saying. We still want, with the We still want the, with the watershed plan comes, we really want people to follow that. We hope people will take up these projects. That would not change no matter what, uh whether or not we had increases. Like everybody else, our budgets go up, our costs go up. Not ex- not in- intrinsically directly related. We, but we still want people because it will help. But we still have infrastructure costs that we still need to do. So I understand what you're saying. I do hear that and thank you for your comment. I do appreciate it.
I heard a water source. Yeah. Um, how much? Were you ever reimbursed for any of the expenses um that you have incurred because of the then, um, if not, how much of the increase is related to Red Hill?
Um, I can answer the first one, but I think I'm gonna ask our deputy manager to come up and ask, answer part two. Uh the short answer on the reimbursement is no. We have asked the Navy. The Navy has sent us a letter saying they're not authorized to reimburse us. We have uh gone after other uh funds of money at the federal level. Our congressional, our state and our city elected officials have been terrific in, in guiding us and helping us and providing. They did give us CARES money. We got uh Build Better money back as well that we're using. But the short answer unfortunately is no. However, we will pursue all options open and available to us for the nation, so to speak. Thank you, Chair, Board Member. Appreciate that.
Hi, thank you for that question, Erwin Kawata, Board of Water Supply. Respect to reimbursement. Yeah, we're leaving all of our legal options open to seek reimbursement of uh these we spend uh in response to Red Hill. So the answer is is open. And get to that point where we do know how much and we have our position to do so, we're gonna pursue it.
Yeah. How much is it, by the way? How much are, are you?
Uh as far as right now is concerned, um of the amount, we're just starting in terms of looking for additional wells. We have, we're just exploring, trying to find the wells. But once we do find new water sources, we're gonna have to develop them, right? Put in the pump station, the infrastructure. That's when all of the costs are gonna start to accumulate. And those are not gonna happen immediately. They're gonna happen over a long period. Recovery or what we're gonna be recovering is really over a long period of time. That is, and then at that point, we'll go in all at.
Who's faucet is coming down the road?
Well, it increases really to uh, uh, the rising cost of operating a water system right now. I mean, just generally, uh, electricity is going up, cost of goods and services, like it affects us, gasoline is going up, as you know. It's our operations as well. So the rate increase is really enable us to continue to provide you with our current level of service. Because yes, we can, we are going to tighten our belt and reduce our costs as much as possible. But there's a limit in which we can do that. If we reduce our costs too much, then it also affects our, our level of service. It can affect water pressure, it can affect service dependability, response to main breaks, all of those kinds of things, our ability to safety of the water, all of those things are gonna start to suffer. So to prevent that from happening, unfortunately, we have to do this rate increase to ensure that we maintain our level of service to the customer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Letting us know what is up ahead and try to keep our water supply safe. You see? Um, I recognize Janine Ota, please go ahead, Janine.
Um, thank you, Chair. For the Board of Water Supply staff, I hope you'll let the community know if you run into roadblocks or barriers in reimbursements from the Navy. Because I did ask Rep. Case that um Board of Water Supply is expecting reimbursements and they're not getting it now. Um, I, I understand the federal method of, of, you know, you have to pay and then be reimbursed. But he said, no, that doesn't make any sense at all. So just saying that there may be different perspectives on um, on how you're being reimbursed. But if you're not getting it, I hope you let us know so that we can put pressure on our congressional as citizens to say, look, they wronged us and they need to pay. And they need to pay up, you know, upfront too. Because it costs, it costs money to pay upfront, right? Anyway, thank you very much.
Ms. Ota, really appreciate your kind words and we will absolutely reach out to the community. Because every group we've met with has asked that question and they have the same concerns. And I agree, basically, it's coming out of your pocket, anything that we do do right now. And so thank you for your kind words, really appreciate that. Uh one other, just really quick, Chair. If you have any questions that you think of after tonight, please call me and I'll give you my direct line at eight oh eight seven four eight five three one nine. That is my direct office line. And please, if I don't, I'll pick up, just leave me a message and I will call you back. And I'll be happy to answer any additional questions. Thank you. And thank you, Chair, for your time tonight.
Hey, Janine. That you are the request from, from to hear more about the Inahaina Community Association. Janine Ota is the president of, of the Inahaina Community Association. And um she can tell you what the association does, what they stand become involved.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So thank you for um the request to provide information. So I'm with the Inahaina Community Association. I've been involved with the association for almost twenty-five years now. Um, and what I started because I was concerned about the stream since I live next to the stream. Um, at that time, there was um state legislation going through to fund some of the uh improvements for the stream. So that's how I got involved. I mean, yes, so it's, it, it was the stream. Okay, it's not. Okay, so um the Inahaina Community Association is, Association is one of the oldest um community organizations in Hawaii. Uh, we're founded in nineteen sixty-six. One hundred percent of our board of eight members are residents of Inahaina and we're all volunteer. Um, and members of the um Inahaina Community Association must be residents of Inahaina. Um, the organization was founded to promote the general welfare of the Inahaina area and its residents. Um, to foster a positive community spirit and to take informed action when necessary on community problems. So we operate on these basic principles, to oppose commercial business in residential neighborhoods. To oppose development of conservation and preservation zone properties. Uh, to keep our homes and neighborhoods safe. Now, this is from the hazards that are well-known in Wailupi Valley. For instance, rockfall, slides, flooding. And um the, the goal is to avoid potential hazards to current and future residents. Um, also traffic safety and safe streets. So that's the, like, the safety issue. Um, flood mitigation of Wailupi Stream is um one of our top priorities. And to preserve the quality of life for our residents. So just going through each of the principles. This one, um opposing commercial business in residential neighborhoods. The biggest category here is the wedding businesses. Um, so most of you know about nine-one-nine Punahale Place, which is still operating. Um, the first complaint came in twenty thirteen. And the city has not been able to close down that business since then. Um, in twenty fourteen, they had at least fifty thousand dollars of fines plus additional prior to that, uh, since the calculation. And we, we cannot get um from DPP the current status of the fines. There's also um other bridal wedding businesses. Um, I can hear some background. So if somebody could um mute some mics. Um, thank you. So there's two properties, uh five-two-four-five and five-two-five-three on Kalaniana Ole Highway. And those are um run by Tsukada Global as best bridal and those are Japanese weddings. So the first one, um, at five-two-four-five, they purchased the property from the family, the longtime owners. And they invested on the property and they heavily remodeled the properly, property. But then the pandemic came and there were zero Japanese weddings. So that property never had any weddings that we were concerned about. Um, but now that property is up for sale for almost nine million dollars. Um, the next one is five-two-five-three Kalaniana Ole. And again, that's a Tsukada Global. Um, this is the former Felix property. As you know, that was the first um wedding chapel business that was on the radar. So back in the day when John Henry Felix was a sitting council member, he was um violating zoning laws. The business did not close, but they had two stipulations to observe the home occupation requirements. But he paid uh forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars out of a total ninety-eight thousand eight hundred dollars in fines. Um, the next property, and this is one where we, um, is two properties, that's the outrigger. The Honganji Corporation was going to purchase the property to operate a for-profit uh business for corporate retreats, um, events and a wedding business that would be operated by Watabe Wedding, another Japanese uh wedding business. So um, we met with them. We objected to their um business because it's commercial and residential. It's not permitted, it would be illegal. And we got the help of Neighborhood Board Number Two on that. And so they decided not to purchase the property. Um, so there's a additional now. This one, um Board Member Johnson is familiar with, it's five oh five Kalaniana Ole. That was the um Ireland weddings, which was closed. Um, they paid five thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars out of one hundred and nine thousand dollars of accumulated fines. So you can see the settlement of the fines does not help to deter business. The wedding manager of that time was at Justin Pinoki. And he is the current manager at nine-one-nine Punahale Place. So he just moved his business um down the street and is still operating that nine-one-nine. Um, another wedding business is at five-three-two-nine Kalaniana Ole. This is the Bear Estate. It's a historic um property. Um, they have a conditional use permit. Um, it's a type two, it's the use of historic buildings for wedding ceremonies and tours of the property. Um, since they received their first permit, they had amended it to include other kinds of events like corporate parties. But their um continue, the conditional use permit has uh requirements they must um observe. Like that there's a limit to the number of people that can be in the property at one time, is a limit to the number of um events they can hold in a week. Uh, they can't have um uh music amplified in their yard. So those kinds of things. So uh we keep an eye on this because um the owners of the property has, have tried several times and they've succeeded in some. But they want to double the number of people that could be present on the property to more than one hundred. And um the DPP um refused that request and also said if that they're going to um request any additional increases, they must conduct a traffic study. Okay? So um you know, I think the, one of the concerns about why, why we are objecting to them in the neighborhoods is cuz they bring additional harm. Traffic, additional cars, parking problems, noise and strangers in your neighborhood. And because some of the venues suggest to attendees that they park at the beach parking, it restricts access to public spaces. So here's um some of the photographs that neighbors have taken. So this is one on, you see where there's a bus stop right here? And the limousines and the buses are waiting to pick up attendees. There's valet parking. There's a big bus, uh those little um buses in the neighborhoods and limousines. And they stop along the road at night, creating traffic in a dangerous situation. So the next um category um that, that we're um working on is commercial businesses. So not necessarily wedding, but other commercial businesses. So the biggest effort um was the former Waldorf School property after the Wal- Waldorf School left. Um, and um, so the first let's see on that was the Academy Learning Hub. And they did not have a conditional use permit for any businesses. Um, what they did was to have various business renting the school building. And they had a small cottage on the beach side where they advertised for um events of up to one hundred people. There was also unpermitted building renovations. Um, and mainly, the reason we know about this is the Nenua Street neighbors um saw employees parking in their already congested street and walking across the street to the building to work. Um, so the concerns with that site was to get in and out of that, um, you know, their driveways. The, the small number of parking spaces on um the lot. And when the lot was full, that traffic would back up on Kalaniana Ole. Um, and since, you know, we oppose all, uh, we also oppose proposals by nomadic nurses. So um, you know, Board Member Ham, there's, there was no like personal interest in this. We, we oppose it all, we oppose the previous, um, let's see, we oppose that. We also oppose the dish network who requested a height variance. And it's really easy, right? The height variance on um a, an oceanfront side of Kalaniana Ole, we, really, the DPP should not be allowing that. Um, and we've also um opposed Advanced Healthcare of Hawaii. And we met with the um operators. Um, and it was going to be, it's on the ocean side, a forty-bed skilled nursing facility and rehabi- rehabilitation center on a beachfront lot, two stories, forty-six parking stalls and forty-five employees. We felt that that was inappropriate um in a residential neighborhood. It was just too dense of a use. And also it'd be in a tsunami zone. Um, and the next category was to oppose development on conservation and preservation zone properties. Um, there are a few. Um, some of them are on the slopes. So some landowners for um the slopes may be some of these um properties. The first was at the top of Mauna Wai'a Street, the Horak Residence. So that was a, a class, a conservation district use application. And because of the flooding runoff and landslides, um, we were concerned about that, building on that property. Um, and again, we're concerned with the, you know, future residents who would be living on a property that where homes could slip. Um, so there would be liability uh and property damage concerns, fire and safety access. Um, and we felt that there was an inadequate design. Um, and we felt that there was an inadequate design for the, for the location. And there are also on that side, um, endangered bird species and rare plants. So we put all of those as objections to that project. The one eighty-four Puu Ikena Drive, this is an ongoing issue with us. Um, the Hawaii Lower Ridge Preserve. Um, has a seventy-five acre zone property and we believe that all of the structures that they've um. Put on the site are are non-permitted. And the original purpose for that. For the location was to do some um. Education with native plants and they no longer perform their nonprofit um program. So uh, we need to work with DPP and DLNR. To uh, get them to take action. But with this property, the, the difficulty is that. DPP points to DLNR and DLNR points to DPP. So we haven't. We haven't gotten a lot of traction on that. Um, so keeping homes and neighborhoods safe from rockfall, slides and flooding. So the biggest um effort so far has been on Upper How Street, at the end of How Street. So so, some of you may remember, this is the property that there was cemeteries were proposed and tennis courts. Um, so the oldest record on development application was in nineteen seventy, okay? And since the seventies, um, there have been petitions, testimonies, letters and lots of research. Um, because of the different uses and that the, and you know, the former DPP. Had already said that there should not be any building there because of the, the slippage, the type of soil. And they said it should not and had recommended that those parcels be placed in preservation. And I want to emphasize that a lot of research, um, that's why we take an informed stance. We do a lot of research. Um, and this could mean, for instance, one of our neighbors discovered that a cemetery proposal required a public hearing. So she was looking through ordinances and said, hey, they didn't give us a public hearing. And so um, knowing that that was required, then the. That gave the community a voice in that issue and that really um became a turning point in fighting back against the cemetery proposal. Then um, a neighbor who was, you know, sometimes you look at websites. And she discovered that an application for a building permit had been um applied for at the Upper How Street. And that's when um, the, the neighbors and AHCA discovered that the last nine point five acre property. On that um, back there had been omitted from the purchase of the larger parcel. So the law, the entire parcel was supposed to be purchased by funds that the city council had appropriated. But we did not know about that for at least a decade. Because no one had told the community that nine point five acres was not purchased. And that unfortunately, that nine point five acre property was zoned residential. Um, and then, you know, um, how do we find out about things? Well. Neighbors who walk their dogs or, or walk for exercises. They found leaflets on Upper Inahaina Utility Post, alerting neighbors to excavations and clearing. So we had that, um, the building permit and then now the leaflet said that there's some clearing. So that's how we find out about things. And then we take, we organize and take some action. So continuing, um, in this case, it was really, really organic. Because neighbors called on friends, their contacts. Uh, when it became clear that. Um, the property owner might uh, might gate off the trail, then trailing hiking clubs became involved. Hunters became involved. And when um. We knew that there were cultural sites back in the valley, then we had cultural practitioners uh became active. And so other community groups, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, DLNR, and you know, they wrote letters. And most importantly, lineal descendants became involved. Um, so this was, and I say organic because for instance, what happened is someone called us or emailed us and said, hey, I'm a videographer. I would, I would like to do a video for you folks so you could put it up on your um website and. And explain why it's significant for that property. So we got a videographer. And then someone was doing research and they sent an email saying, I found some articles um about the trail. Uh, but they're in Hawaiian, so we need a translator. Um, I saw that email in the evening. By the time I woke up and checked my email the next morning, somebody had translated all of those articles. So it's just things like that that happened that we don't plan, but it's kind of wonderful, right? Um, and then for that.
Excuse me, Jeannie?
Yes.
Just letting you know, um, um, you're at fifteen minutes now and we have to wrap up our meeting. Would you be able to kind of um. Summarize um the rest of, of what we're going to say?
Oh, sure. Okay.
Maybe tell, if you can let people know, the community who um are residents of Inahaina, let them know how they can. Become involved. Um, you're doing a lot of, you've done a lot of wonderful work and people want to know um. How they can sign up, you know, come to meetings and become involved in, in Inahaina Community Association.
So as you can see, a lot of the involvement occurs when we were addressing specific issues. In this case, we got one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven signatures. And then volunteers went door to door to get signatures for some other uh real estate issues. Um, so that's kind of when they're, the intensity, when we need a lot of participation. So anyway, that's the, the property is. Has been purchased. It took from nineteen seventy to twenty nineteen, okay? And I just wanted to, and I just wanted to go into Kiki Lani Circle because there's been a lot of um questions about that. And again. For this project. The homeowner, I mean, the property owner wanted to take sixty-five feet off of the mountain. So you can see all the excavation. So the major concern of this property was that um, the homes below. Were, were not probably going to be safe from the steep slope and all of the excavation. Um, we found out later about the Evi Kupuna and the burial caves. So the first iteration was from two thousand and six. And then, um, you know, there were a hundred people at Neighborhood Board Meetings and community meetings. So this is when we need people to show up. This is when we need people to say, I want to do something. And then there's a new project. And again, there were two hundred people at a Neighborhood Board Meeting. So that's when we need concerned neighbors. Um, yeah. So uh, we work on a lot of issues, but. Well, basically it's on keeping our neighborhoods safe. And we will, and we have, um, oh, okay. So we do have a, um. We do have um a, a website and I started to redo it, but um. So that's our website. I just want to say, um, as our property values increase. Some say it's because of our proximity to downtown. But really, 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 I think the real value is in the community that Inahaina residents have built. It's because of their concern for their neighborhood and their participation. So. Thank you.
Thank you for representing the Inahaina community and, and for helping. To protect the community and the, and the lands there. We really appreciate all you've done, Jeannie. And thank you for, for coming tonight and. And, and offering, um, you know, a summary of, of many of the projects that you've been involved in and continue to be involved in.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure for me and it's been an honor. And really because I meet so many great people. And they are willing to help. It's, it, it really is wonderful.
We have a question from um, one of the board members, Shelley Ham. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So um, thank you for that presentation. I mean, clearly the Inahaina Community Association does a lot. I think my concern in the previous meeting wasn't so much all of the great things that you do. But more recruitment, where the checks are going and that kind of thing. Um, I have a number of neighbors who have claimed to have repeatedly reached out to join the association, but with no response. Um, and of course, we've heard the story of Kevin who mailed in his check. Um, was denied but never got his check back. So he claims, I don't know the details. But um, I was just more concerned about where the checks are going. Are you a nonprofit? How you're recruiting, that kind of thing. So we're obviously running over now and I wouldn't anticipate such a long answer tonight. But I would like in the future to hear about those things.
But you can, we can talk offline.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, but I think it, I, I think it should be public knowledge.
Well.
I mean, not just solely for me. I'm thinking for the community as a whole.
Yeah. So we do have membership applications. Um, and we receive our mail at the library. We're still very much um hard copy because we have a lot of older residents.
Are you, is it, is the Inahaina Community Association a nonprofit?
We're not a nonprofit.
Okay. So the checks are donations to, that's what I.
They're just membership dues and they're like ten dollars or twenty dollars a, a year. It's not. And we're not operating on big money. I think, I think we have like barely two thousand dollars in our checking account. Right. Yeah, we're not big funds.
Okay. Yeah, I, I still think, I, I would like more information on, in future meetings, how recruitment is handled.
Right.
It seems odd though. I mean, money has to be filed somewhere, right? Like. I don't know.
Okay, we also have a question from Sherry Spangler. Excuse me, Shelley. Um, I just want to cover everybody before we have to.
Absolutely.
Sherry?
Um, having served on a community association, and whatever you charge dues, in our neighborhood, they charge seventy-five dollars a month. Or it was a year, excuse me. And that was for paper and pencils and time and, you know, Xeroxing and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, uh, I just wanted to say that I have worked with Jeannie Ota and all the past presidents of the Inahaina Community Association. And their members of their board since nineteen eighty-nine. And I have never, it's been such an honor and a joy to learn at their feet. And when I've helped other communities around this island, all around this island. And they say, we can't win this fight because these people are big and they're against us. And I tell them the stories of the battles that Inahaina Community Association has won, supposedly done deals. And I said, you have no idea the value of a strong board and a strong community that comes together when they need to. And it's the Inahaina Community Association and people like Jeannie Ota. And I just want to thank her for being here and coming to our meetings. Thank you very much.
Yes, Jeannie, thank you for contributing to our meetings. And again, appreciate um your presentation tonight. Thank you. We are having to, we are reaching our adjournment timeout and we have reached form with Partner Akiona having joined us. Um, I, I would like to um ask if there are any, any corrections to the August minutes that were distributed. Um, if there are no corrections, the. Those minutes are adopted. Were there any corrections to the August minutes?
Clarissa, I'm sorry, I'm trying to put my hand up. Hold on. Hand is a hand up?
Yes, no.
Clarissa?
Does this pertain to the minute?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, please go ahead.
Actually, I guess it was uh, when Casey Abe. Sent his uh, stuff over the email and he gave the uh incorrect. By accident, he, he put what we had corrected, the tally for the um. The traffic study resolution that we passed eight, zero, zero. And I thought that maybe it's uh DOT via Tracy, Casey Abe should correct what he put with his email. That the, our traffic resolution passed eight, zero, zero. That's all. Does that make sense? So it was in Casey Abe's PowerPoint. It's really not in our minutes, but in his PowerPoint, which he sent to us. It contained the incorrect uh vote count, which he put the, what we had incorrectly stated. And we have already corrected it via our minutes last month. But Casey Abe should correct in his PowerPoint that the rest of the traffic.
Member Spangler?
Yeah.
Sorry, Member Spangler, I can actually, what I'll do is I'll let him know, but it's, um, this is a time for us in regards to our minutes. The minutes that we have to post on the NCO website. So if the, if, if they're clean, if they're correct on our, our minutes, um, is that all right? Or?
Well, we, we did, we did correct them on.
Okay.
But because it was incorrect at one point, it passed out over to DOT and DOT carried the incorrect count. So somehow if DOT can correct that in their email to reflect that the vote for the traffic study from Neighborhood Board Number Two was eight, zero, zero, four.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let, um, I'll let Casey know that.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Okay, so um, no, we don't need to take a vote on this. Okay, so we, the. August are therefore um adopted and. So um, Chair, um, I'm sorry. Chair Burkett, sorry, I'm, it's late. Uh, Chair Burkett um informed me that she's not available to cover or to facilitate the October meeting. And then we reached out to Vice Chair, um. Uh, yeah, Vice Chair Lucas, I'm so sorry, it's so late. I'm sorry. Um, Vice Chair Lucas, and she's out of town as well. So um, we wanted to ask, who would be the next person? So the next person would be Member Johnson. And then, um, if we could ask, Member Johnson, could you can facilitate the meeting in October?
Um, I decline. I, I would prefer to have um, uh, Member Spangler. She's done that before and she does a great job.
Okay, Member Spangler, is it okay for you to facilitate the October meeting?
Thank you, Jeannie, for that vote of confidence, except I never have chaired a Neighborhood Board Meeting before. Um, and I'm not computer literate, so I would not be able to do it. But I. Thank you. I thank you for the concept.
Okay, so um, if the officers, so what it is, how the process goes is. There's, and then it's the longest uh member um after, so uh, member. Most senior member, that's correct. So um, the next person would, would be um. Member Reeves, but she's not here. Um, I know that uh, Member Akiona has offered, Partner Akiona has offered to facilitate the meeting. But the next person that would be on the list would be Member Sanora Pale. Okay. Yeah, so you would be the next one to facilitate October's meeting. Uh, Member Akiona has offered to, to do it, but you're the next senior. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So um, if everybody's okay with it, um. If, if everybody's okay with Partner Akiona or Member Akiona to facilitate the meeting uh for October. Is that, can we, can have a raise hand to make sure that everybody's in agreement? Okay, I, I know Chair agrees with, um, and then Member Sanora Pale and Member Gonzales, is that okay? Yep, he's okay with that. And then the only person I don't see, I don't see is uh, oh yeah, okay. Member Akiona Keahulani, she raised her hand. So um. Partner will be facilitating the October meeting. Mahalo.
Mahalo, partner. Okay, so our next meeting will be on October fifth. Okay, so our next meeting will be on October fifth. Uh, here or on web, and thank you to, to um all the board members. And, and all, everyone from the community who joined our meeting tonight and gave their, their input in presentations. We really appreciate your being in. We look forward to seeing you again on. Agenda already for the fifth, and that's one reason why I want to know, make sure we were gonna have a meeting on that date. So um, all, and please take care and. Meeting is now adjourned.